He was just here.
I'd like to welcome you to our February 8, 2024 council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid reputation of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government, and we ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I'd like to welcome Pastor Kathy Thacker, pastor of the First United Methodist Church of St. Cloud. Please let's stand together. She comes to lead us on our invocation. Please remain standing afterward for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Loving God, our Creator, we thank you for this day, for the gift of love we celebrate next week, for the gift of our families and friends, and for our beautiful city of St. Cloud. Tonight, we lift up our city manager Veronica Miller's family in the passing of her father. Ask that you would bring peace and comfort to them. We thank you for each and every person here today, for all the planning and the work that has been done to prepare us for this time. As we continue to see constant growth and expansion in our city, we ask that you help us to remember that you are our constant presence, yesterday, today, and tomorrow. Give us wisdom and direction as we plan and implement improvements to keep our community safe in a place where all are welcome and can grow. We thank you for the excellent departments, for all our law enforcement representatives here tonight. We give you thanks for emergency management people, fire, the personnel, and planning services. Thank you for the dedication of each employee here to protect and serve our community. And we thank you for the commissioners and our mayor. Tonight, we ask for your wisdom and guidance in this meeting that we make wise decisions for our economic development, financial stability, services for the public, and for the benefit of our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thacker. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Mr. Tomac, do you have any agenda updates for us?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. On consent agenda, item number K, the proclamation policy, I would like to remove that from the agenda.
Item K will be pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, to allow the city manager to finalize and bring it back to you all.
All right.
Consent item number L, I've attached, or I've put in front of you a clarification memo, and the cover sheet, we listed an account number that would be affected by this item. The finance director has looked at it, confirmed that the funds will be reimbursed or actually paid for out of the proceeds of the bond, and he gave me the five specific account numbers that'll be affected by it. So instead of me reading those to you, I've just put them in front of you in a memo. It can stay on consent. It's just a clarification of what's on the cover sheet.
Thank you for that clarification. For consent item L, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir. Public hearing, item number four, the Walker property.
Yes, sir.
The applicant has requested that that item be continued to March 14th. So the recommendation is to just continue that to March 14th and not hold the public hearing today. We'll go ahead and have the actual public hearing on March 14th. To do that, I think some folks might be here for that item. I would ask if you guys could adjust your agenda, maybe move that to the very beginning. We'll have the city clerk read it into the record, and you all can make the motion to continue it to March 14th, so folks don't have to stay.
All right. If there are no objections from our council, we'll go ahead and read item number four from public hearings into the record.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2024-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD planned unit development compatible with a low-density residential, future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2022-43 for approximately 25.59 acres identified as Walker property located south of Chissim Park Trail, west of South Narcusi Road, north of Old Oak Trail, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for approval of the preliminary final master plan and preliminary subdivision plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, subrogability, and effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from council that we continue this item to the March 14th council meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion for continuance to March 14th from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and it will be continued.
Thank you, Mayor. Then, under council action items tonight, this is our new process to introduce the ordinances so that we can publish the hearing notices. There are no presentations from the developers or the staff, and there will be no public input, I'm afraid. Maybe because it's new, some folks might have come for some of these items, specifically for the pedicab ordinance, which is number 2024-15. And then there's a series of items for Lake Lizzy Ventures off of Pine Grove Road, items 2024-19, 2024-20, and 2024-21 for the annexation, comp plan amendment, and rezoning of property off of Pine Grove. These items are merely being approved for staff to publish the public hearings for February 20th before the Planning Commission and March 14th for this body. And so if folks are waiting around to actually give public input, they will not be allowed to do that.
Council action items 1, 2, 3, and 4 will simply be read into the record by and approved for publication by the council.
Yes, sir. And then finally, Trinity Place Development and Amelia Grove Development on Pine Grove, those projects were advertised for today's meeting, but they were not placed on the agenda. Those are annexations, so those will be re-advertised. And again, those will be advertised for the March 14th council meeting.
All right.
So folks who live in that Lake Lizzy-Pine Grove area are gonna enjoy March 14th.
All right. So those items will not come up tonight? They will come forward in a future meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir. Thanks for your patience.
All right. And that brings us to the next item presentation. The first presentation will be for the Employee of the Year by Richard Thompson.
My name is Richard Thompson. I'm the acting fire chief for St. Cloud Fire Department. We're here tonight to recognize one of our firefighters who got the 2023 Employee of the Year, J.C.S. Golding. J.C.S. has been a dedicated member of our department since 2018. He's always bringing his construction talents to our department and helping with a whole bunch of tasks. He's not for hire. Put your pens down. But he's here tonight and recognized tonight for one great act of kindness and compassion. On September 25th, 2023, J.C.S. and his fellow crew responded to a serious medical call involving a young child. That child needed to be flown to a hospital in downtown Orlando. When the ambulance crew, along with the mother, got to the helicopter, the mother was met by the flight crew and said, "Sorry, ma'am, it's a safety risk for you to get into the helicopter with your child wearing those shoes or sandals or flip-flops." J.C.S. said, "Nay-nay." He took off his own shoes, gave it to the parent, so that that mother could fly to the hospital beside her child. And that that is why we are recognizing him this year. That's the kind of compassion that we want all city employees to emulate, and we're very, very proud of J.C.S. Congratulations.
Are these the shoes?
Yeah.
You have to have those drawn. Thank you for all that you do. At this time, we have a presentation for Employee of the Month by Roberto Smith.
Good evening, everyone, councilor, mayor. I'm actually delighted for this opportunity to help recognize Mr. Josh Mears. Josh has been with the city now for less than a year. He started here on March this year, and since he's joined us, I would say his contribution has been remarkable. As our network, our senior network engineer, Josh has basically owned the network since he came in. He's taken the initiative to document our fiber infrastructure. He's forged partnerships with our carriers that has really improved our connectivity. He's taken the initiative as well to be a mentor for members of our team who are looking to expand their skill set. And of course, he's introduced cost-cutting measures that saves on our operating expenses, our operating costs. But primarily, I think this award has stemmed from Josh's work ethic. This man works nonstop. He's literally gotten his hands dirty to save the city thousands of dollars. He's actually made some vendors mad. Some of the things that we've typically contracted out to vendors, Josh has taken initiative to do himself, and again, saved thousands of dollars. So it's a real privilege to have him on the team, and I think he's an asset to the city. Well done, sir. Your hard work is recognized.
The next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the City Council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. We ask that when you come forward, that you please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Tina, you'll have to tell me that last name, okay?
Wyberl.
That's a beautiful name. I like that. Wyberl.
All right. So I'm Tina Wyberl. My address is 2555 Stemwood Court, Kissimmee, Florida. I'm actually here for St. Cloud Middle School tonight. And we have always held our dance, other than, you know, the two COVID years, at the Civic Center, and they've always graciously waived their fees. This year, I filled out all the paperwork and was told by the person that's now in charge that you guys were no longer accepting any waivers, not even looking at them. And I reached out to the person I used to deal with and said, "Well, why?" And so I have two questions. One, why? And two, will you reconsider? It is our end-of-year dance. They have to be passing for the year. No referrals for the fourth quarter. It keeps our referrals down. It gives us a safe economical place to hold the dance. It's a little bit better than having it in our cafeteria. It also allows me to keep the cost between $15 and $20, which covers food, supplies, and the DJ. If not, we either have to charge the kids about $40 or hold it in the cafeteria. And again, we've always worked with them. We've always done a good job cleaning up after ourselves, and I understand sometimes, you know, people take advantage of waivers, but we're also a public school, and we're not taking advantage. So I implore you to reconsider. And I brought my waiver with me tonight, just in case you would reconsider. And that's all I got to say.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your comment.
Can I turn this in somewhere?
You're welcome to turn that in. Mr. Tomac, are you wanting to speak to this?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it tomorrow. I think that has something to do with our new policies on our parks programming, so I can talk to the staff and find out where this one fell and get back to you on it.
All right. Thank you very much.
We certainly understand your frustration, but it's, we had this pause because of this very thing. We just had a line of people, and if you grant one, you feel like you gotta grant them all. So he'll take a look at that.
Yes.
And see if there's any loopholes for you.
I would greatly appreciate that, and the eighth graders would greatly appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizens Forum? If not, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, we've already had two items on the agenda noted, K and L. Do we have any other input from council?
B and C.
I don't see any lights.
Sir.
So, oh, Mr. Gilbert, Councilmember Gilbert.
B and C, please.
Do what?
B and C. Did you say you wanted to go over that?
No.
My mistake. My mistake.
Okay. First of all, would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda, knowing that item K has been pulled and L has been amended? Councilmember Matheny.
Mayor, I may be misheard it, but Mr. Gilbert, were you trying to pull B and C?
Just to discuss.
To discuss, yeah.
Oh, you want to discuss them?
Yes.
I'm sorry. You didn't make that really clear to me.
Last time, we just called up the alphabets, and then you put them on paper, so I thought we were doing alphabet soup again.
All right. Well, let's back up then.
My bad.
Let's go to item number C.
B and C.
B and C?
Yeah. They're the block grants.
All right. You have the floor.
I just wanted to make sure we're talking about, these grants that are awarded to us, it looks like both of them are for Assau County, but the City of St. Cloud is going to be granted the, I think it's $180,000 and then $80,000, correct? Is that gonna go to Citizens of St. Cloud for roofs and windows and things such as that?
Good evening, Antranet Forbes Economic Development Director. Yes, both B and C are programs that are specifically for St. Cloud residents only.
I just want to make that clear. I know we're working with the Council on Aging and also the county. I just want to make clear that that money will be spent here in St. Cloud. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the inconvenience, Mayor.
Will you forgive me? I don't have my hearing aids in tonight, so you need to speak a little louder, okay?
Yes, sir.
I knew I forgot something. Now, let's back up again. Could we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion from Councilmember Matheny? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Thank you very much. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the public hearings. We'll begin with item number one. Madam Clerk, would you please read that into the record?
Public hearing for resolution number 2024-007R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for a place of worship in the R-3 single-family dwelling zoning district on a 2.61 acres known as Jesus is Lord Ministry, generally located east of South Indiana Avenue, west of Michigan Avenue, south of Firdick Road, and north of Nolte Road, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, council. This is Tisha Manning, zoning manager for Community Development, and I will be presenting this conditional use to you tonight. It is for a place of worship, and it's about 2.61 acres. Staff does recommend approval with conditions. The current zoning is single-family dwelling, RE, with a future land use of low-density residential. The proposed conditional use is for a place of worship that will host approximately 150 to 250 people for weekly services. The development poses no adverse impacts to city facilities. This is a graphic depiction of the area in which the property currently is and the zoning and future land use are surrounded in that area. This is a concept plan that was presented by the applicant of what they're proposing to build. There is a second concept plan that the applicant provided. However, this is the concept plan that they are more likely to go with, if possible. Again, staff recommendation is approval with conditions, and the conditions are as follows. The approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan as a site plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code. The second condition is that if the conditional use is specifically for the use identified as place of worship to include Bible study, office space, classrooms to accommodate workshops, and preparation for community events. If at such time the church intends to serve as a food pantry or school, another conditional use will be required. And the fourth condition is that the main auditorium or sanctuary shall not have more than 250 seats. I would also like to mention that Planning Commission did deny, did present a recommendation of denial for resolution 2024-07 based upon the six factual matters of the Land Development Code. Following paneling commission, the applicant did reach out to staff, and staff suggested that the applicant hold a community meeting, at which time two community meetings were held for this conditional use. One was held on January 29th at 4:30, in which staff attended, and no one from the community attended. The second community meeting was also, was held on February 5th. This time, it was held at 6:00 PM at Veterans Memorial Library, and again, no one from the community attended. The requested action is that City Council approve this resolution 2024-07 with conditions as stated by staff. Staff and the applicant are available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to speak to this? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Monique Harris. Address is 4727 Old Canoe Creek Road, St. Cloud. You need the zip code, 34769.
That's all.
Okay. Good evening. We did take the recommendations from the Planning Committee. They denied it, but then they also suggested get to meet the neighbors, and so we had a letter mailed out to the resident within that area. And so we had it that evening on 29th. It was a little chilly, and it was outside on the land itself. No one came, so the city recommended maybe having another one at a different location, because it was at 4:30 at that time. And so we took that recommendation, and we had it at the library in St. Cloud from 6:00 to 7:30, and no one from the community showed up. And those, the second letter, just to make sure, because we had that on the 5th, to make sure that the letters would get there in an appropriate time, I sent them out priority mail, and so they did receive those, but no one showed up. And we were, the meetings were set from the intent of our heart to show the site plan. I know from the Planning Commission meeting, some neighbors had some concerns, and we were, you know, we're open, because the site, the way the site plan is now, where the building is sitting, we're open to put the building on the other side, or, you know what I mean? So we're open to all that. We're not here to try to cause the conflict. We really here to serve the community. So unfortunately, no one came out to the meeting, so that we could hear if they had some other suggestions for us. We would, you know, be open to that.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us?
No, that's all.
I see that you're here. Do you?
Yes. Hi, I'm Christopher Bravo.
Step up the mic, okay.
Christopher Bravo, 7221 Aloma Avenue, Warner Park, 32792. I'm the engineer on this project, and again, I'm available to answer any questions or address any concerns you may have. One of the things that I want to make sure was abundantly clear to staff and any residents who may be concerned, again, is that the conceptual site plan that was presented is not the final plan, that we will, you know, work with staff, and we're open to comments, suggestions, and certainly any conditions that the board determined to be appropriate so that, you know, we can fit into the community. It is the applicant's desire to be a good neighbor and to be an asset to the community. They don't want to, you know, be a negative impact.
Thank you very much. If you'll stand by, we have any questions. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please step forward. Step to the mic.
Hi, I'm Jamie Croft. I'm at 3175 Michigan. I'm about three properties down across the street. Haven't received any notification. Spoke to a couple other neighbors, also didn't receive notification. I did find out about this meeting, and I made it here as quick as I could tonight. My concerns are, the traffic is already terrible on Michigan. The property being built up, my property floods because of the neighborhood right around me, and the water doesn't really have anywhere to go once it starts draining down toward me. When there's a heavy rain, Michigan floods over, right there at David, which is right by the church. It's just, the water doesn't really drain like it should, but that property I know had field dirt being brought in. I remember seeing a sign up there, and it's definitely built up. I thought it was wetlands back there. I don't know what else to say, other than I have concerns about the traffic. I don't know what else to say, other than I have concerns about the traffic and the water.
Thank you very much. John Hauser?
John Hauser, 600 West New Nolte Road, St. Cloud, Florida. Been living there over 25 years on the corner of West New Nolte and Michigan Avenue. Never received a letter from anybody about a meeting on the property or a meeting at the library. So, my biggest concern is that part of Michigan is a residential neighborhood. Everyone there, single-family homes. Maybe you live on a quarter acre, maybe you live on 10 acres. There's no commercial property, there's no commercial buildings on that entire section of Michigan Avenue. It's not conducive to our neighborhood, and it doesn't fit the fabric of our neighborhood. So, what I've seen there, they have 60 parking lots. Is that correct? 60 parking spaces?
You need to s-
I'm sorry, there's 60 parking spaces?
Sir. No, you, just speak, you can't engage-
Oh, you told me if I had any questions, I can revert to the guy behind you.
Well, you ask your question, and then we'll ask them to address it.
Okay. Is there 60 parking spaces on that lot?
Go ahead. What else, what other questions you have?
Has there been any traffic studies?
Go ahead.
And also, like, I'll just reiterate again, this is not conducive to the fabric of our neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. We don't want a commercial building on that lot.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like to address the issue? Any questions that you raised there, before we go on to other questions?
Good evening again. The letters, I did ask the city to assist me, and they did send me a mailing list. So, those letters were sent out. I also sent, when I sent the priority mail the second time to make sure that the letters were sent out, it was based on the mailing list that I was giving. And they got the pictures, they got the receipts of those letters were sent out. Unfortunately, it may not have been to the whole Michigan street, but the mailing list that I did receive, I did attend to that. The other important information is that we did a traffic impact analysis that was included in the conditional use. The timing of our services would be in the evening, primarily on the weekend, and it did not show a significant impact of the traffic on that side. We also did a, hired a collegeist to come and to give us an analysis, I think it was a 25-page report, on the wetland that I was even concerned about as well. And so, that should have been included in the conditional use as well, because he had questions. And according to, I believe, the statistics or the codes that you have, the requirement was for one parking lot per four seats. And we're even open to decrease between 150 and 200. We don't necessarily have to max that out, so we're open for that.
Okay.
Couple other things with regards to the parking spaces. They're depicted on the site plan so that staff can see that we're making provisions for the minimum number of vehicles. We're providing paved parking for the daily use in the handicap vehicles. Majority of the proposed parking would be grass parking, so again, an attempt to minimize the amount of runoff associated with proposed improvements.
Okay.
And we are including Austin Environmental, Austin Ecological. The environmental consulting firm that we're working with is, you know, prepared to work with staff, the Warren Management District, and DEP to make sure that any concerns, whether it's going forward or performed by the previous owner, that everything is addressed appropriately and, you know, avoided if possible, mitigated if impacts are not possible. With regards to the drainage concerns, as I mentioned at the planning commission meeting, and again, I assume each of you is familiar with this. Right now, things are in a natural condition, which means the water goes where the water goes. With an engineered site plan, we can control that to some extent and direct it to a location that is going to have the least impact on the adjacent properties. And that might mean holding a little bit more water on site than what the code minimum would require, but we'll do whatever's necessary to ensure that, you know, we're not causing an adverse impact on the neighbors.
All right, thank you. I'm going to entertain the rest of these comments, and if you have any other comments after all of these, you're welcome to speak once again.
Yes, sir.
Michael Hee, Heepee, is that correct? Hi, Michael.
How are you?
If you'd come up, state your name and address.
Mike Heepee, 994 Seneca Trail, St. Cloud, Florida. As Mr. Hauser had noted, that the primary concern is that it's a residential neighborhood. Once commercial properties start moving, and what's to stop changing zoning for other properties in that area? And also, we know that the area of growth is, you know, across the street, there's proposed possibly another 30 homes there. The corner of Nolte and Michigan Avenue, we have two corners right now that could be converted into commercial properties. So, as the impact study goes, impact and traffic studies, where is the start and end of that impact study? You know, I've never seen any of the metering devices that go across the road to measure traffic at this time of day. And what's to say, we're talking about the, you know, the food pantry or anything that could possibly come along with that? This is going to bring more people into the neighborhood, people that are from outside the neighborhood, which, and I appreciate what they're trying to do. I really do. Help is always wanted, but it's not really the right spot. And there's no public transportation there. I'm not understanding the reason for the location besides a good price. You know what I mean? I don't, it doesn't fit in our neighborhood, especially the people to the right and to the left. And also, if it does convert into something else down the road, there's just so much traffic there. You know, I don't know if any of you guys know where it is exactly. You don't live there, but we do. You know, and that's really the concern. I think the, I think the objective of the program is nice, but not there. It's a residential neighborhood. Your kids are in the backyard, and you know, what happens when the pastor says, "Hey, keep it down out there," you know? You know, Sunday Mass, you know, it's just not the right spot. And also, we do have the water mitigation issues. There is a pond on the property. And I, engineering is a great thing, and I appreciate that, but you also know engineers do make problems and mistakes. So, how do we address that, like we're talking about the water? Now, we're talking parking grass and cars on the grass parking lot. How do we handle the situation when there's oil dripping into the groundwater there? Where there's other issues that really have, should be addressed? A complete environment impact study, environmental impact study should be done. And I don't think they've reached that bar yet. And also, what about the people in the neighborhood? These guys are from, not from our neighborhood. Let us do what we want in our neighborhood, you know? And appreciate the hard work. I don't want your jobs. And just consider the people that live right there, because it did not pass the last time. And I don't see how we've done one before, and we go to do another one. It's double and double indemnity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Brenham?
Good evening. Richard Brenham is my name. I live on the Michigan Avenue at 3615. I've lived there for 25 years, and I did get a letter from y'all because it stated that I was within 500 feet of the proposed church. I've got no problem with churches. What I do have a problem with is, and some of the other citizens have said, traffic. I've got a big problem with that, and it's not getting any better. When I moved out there, I could back out of my driveway. And I can no longer do that at peak times. And I've looked at the traffic studies, and this has been a topic which the neighbors have been talking about. However, I did not get a letter for January 29th meeting or February 6th at Veterans Library. But I told, I was aware of the planning commission meeting, and I showed, or I told them that that particular day. I'm retired now, and I see what's happening in my neighborhood. And I watched 12 buses at a peak time, back-to-back, rolled down Michigan Avenue, south past my house. When I, when I say I can't back out of my driveway, I can't. So, especially when peak hours are going on. I come around and drive through my neighbor's yard, who doesn't complain, and I get pointed out to where I can get onto Michigan Avenue. Now, from what I've seen, there is no turn lane for this proposed church. There is no sidewalks on that side of the road. And I think that's, they've missed the boat on a couple of those things in trying to present it as a viable site. And the only thing that I think could make it really acceptable to me for them to be good neighbor is to have a turn lane, sidewalks, and you need the four-lane Michigan Avenue. And I don't think y'all want to do that right now when you've got so much other stuff going on, which looks like that infrastructure is behind. So, essentially, I'm saying it's, like Mr. Hauser says, it doesn't, to me, fit into the neighborhood, and the commercial, and the things does not fit either. And if the ministry goes on to a lot more people coming in and out of there at different times, that's just going to make my situation worse. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. That's my take on it.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Clyde Wells?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Clyde Wells, property owner at 3324 Michigan Avenue, which is just to the north of this property, adjacent to it or contiguous to it. The water is one issue we have noticed over the years. There's a pond on the site. I don't know if the previous owner had went in there and filled it, whether it was permitted to be filled or not. The National Wetland Inventory Mapping Program shows that there's a clear wetland through the middle of the property where the pond is. So, I don't see how that can be used for any of the parking or any of it, unless they go through, get all the permitting for it. We have started to have some flooding on our property. The other thing is this is a conditional use zoning change, taking it from LDR into for a religious establishment, which is fine. That's fine, but the properties, our property and the, a few of the others to the north of that are zoned agriculture. And they've been, in my wife's family for years, you're going to hear from a cousin of ours and my wife about that. And it is agricultural property, and it's been used that way for years. There are two and a half, five-acre tracts in there. And it just doesn't seem that this is a good fit for the location. So, that's my take on it. You'll hear some more from them, more about it, because they grew up and they've owned the property for a long, long time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Effie. Effie Wells, is that correct?
Yes, I am Effie Wells, 3324 Michigan Avenue. My family, my grandparents bought that property in 1944. They put a dairy on it. They, Campbell's Dairy was there for several years until the family had to move on. My grandfather got killed on the road on the way back from NASA, and we had to let, they had to let it go. The property that I am on is directly next to this property. I'm on the north side of the property in question. I do not feel that it fits in with the neighborhood at all to change the land use. That doesn't work at all. We are all neighbors there. We have all residential area, and I don't feel that commercial coming in there in the middle of all of us is a good thing at all. I do have problems with the water. That actual area, there's three properties. That property sits in the middle. That property is actually the lowest. It is about 10 inches lower than my property and the property adjacent to it. That's the actual bowl for the national wetlands. So, it is a wetlands. That's, that's my issue, is a big one. It does not fit the area, and it's not, I just don't believe it fits. I have way more, but it doesn't fit. I'll let you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Joanna Edwards?
Good evening. My name is Joan Edwards. I live at 3400 Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm to the property south of the one in question. I did not receive any letters. I am caught up against it, received no letters for any kind of meetings for me to attend and address my issues. The biggest issue I have, where they're placing that, is where my house is. So, there would probably be 50 feet between a church going on and my house, where I may be sleeping. I have a daughter who is a labor and delivery nurse, works nights, sleeps during the day. And I don't think the noise of a church going on while she needs to sleep, because she just put in 12 hours, I just don't think that's going to be very good. And you cannot be quiet. A church is not going to be quiet at all. And I have animals. I have a horse that is blind, living his last life there. And if people touch him on the wrong side, it will freak him out. I just don't think, they have nothing to put a barrier. And for me to be 50 feet from that, I mean, I know they're glad that they're building it back, but that's where my house is. And I don't think it's conducive. It's a low-density. We've already been approved on the other side for 30 more houses to go in. On the other side of me, I just, it's too much traffic. It's hard to get out in the mornings. It's hard to get out in the afternoons because of everything going on with school, after-school activities, football games on Friday night, when they're planning on having a service on Friday nights, and you have the football games letting out at the same time. I just don't think it's conducive for what we already have there. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Wilson Santiago?
Good evening, Council. My name is Wilson Santiago, 3354 Michigan Avenue. I'm in favor of the church. I don't see why not, not having a church in every corner that will help everybody between all the balance that they have. If we get to talk to these people, we'll be able to get them to a church and be able to get them fixed, in other words, you know? I'm in favor. Thank you, as a fact. I got all the letters that they have sent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. William Campbell?
Good evening. William Campbell, 816 Maryland Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. But I do own the property just north of Ms. Effie Campbell, at, I believe the address is 3260 Michigan Avenue there. And I own about almost five acres there. Talking about wet, my property stays wet because of all the growth around it already. Y'all four stand next to that into the city and made it agriculture, okay? But still, that is a residential location out there. A lot of residents, you've got a lot more residents coming in there. I don't see why you should put anything commercial into that location. There's many other places around that you could place commercial property that's not in a residential area, okay? So, I'm going to ask you not to change the zoning on this, keep it residential. Your planning commission has voted against this, all right? And what says if it does pass, that they can't change or start adding things to this property as it goes along, all right? So, you're the ones that needs to make that decision, all right? And I wish that you would use your roles and responsibilities to the community out here and the residents of this city, and to make sure that you do the right thing for them, all right? Not for one church, okay? I'm all for churches, okay? Not a problem with them. It's the idea that you're putting a large commercial structure in a residential area that's going to cause flooding, traffic, and everything like that, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Daniel Kirk?
Good evening, Daniel Kirk, 3601 Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud. When I was attendance at the planning meeting in January, the engineer on the project, Mr. Bravo, he referred to the road as Michigan Road, he didn't even know it was Michigan Avenue, and that just speaks to what's going on in St. Cloud, people are coming in from all over that are just changing everything. I've lived on Michigan Avenue for 28 years, a little over 28 years, this summer, it'll be over half my life, and when I first moved in, Michigan Avenue was a dirt road, dead-end street, now it's one of only six north-south corridors connecting Unulte Road to 192. As many of us on Michigan Avenue know, the traffic is increasing and will only get worse as St. Cloud grows. Speaking of growing, the city council recently approved a zoning change for 10 acres from agricultural on the backside and RRE to R1B to allow 32 houses to be built and a new road. The same company has an additional five-acre parcel that I was made aware of, just north on Michigan, that will likely be a future subdivision, and if they can add more acreage, that'll just be more houses. We have Michigan Estates just up the street, right across the street is another subdivision on Cody, Cody Allen Court, which is 21 houses, and Sky Lake's subdivision is budding up on Furtick Avenue, and they're probably going to run that through, is what I heard, so it's going to add more traffic, I don't know what the traffic study was done, but like the other gentleman said, I've never seen any bans out there to measure traffic. As far as these letters are concerned, I never received a letter, and I gave my address right here in the, in the planning meeting, nobody bothered to contact me about these meetings, and as the gentleman who just spoke in favor of it, he's the gentleman who sold in the property, so I believe that's a little biased. You know, back in 2005, another religious group applied for a conditional use permit, and when we were in the county, it was denied, and they sued, claiming religious discrimination, it was taken to federal court, and they were proven that it was not discrimination, and the county prevailed. So there is, there is precedent that it can be turned down, and there's nothing in this area that's anywhere near this commercial property, the size of it, the scale, and we are residential, that's the future land use, it's been turned down by the planning, the planning department, they recommended against it, and I hope that you'll do the same tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, would the applicant like to address any of the concerns that were raised by the residents here? Are you coming to speak?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Darren Davis, Michigan Avenue, or Mercedes Avenue. I was asked to come here by a gentleman, lives in the neighborhood, he's dealing with some medical issues, so he couldn't show up.
Okay.
And he has some concerns, one is the water, he wanted to know where the outfall of that water was going to come off that property and go to. The surveyor that lives in the neighborhood said that is a natural low ground, he said there's nowhere for that water to actually get out of there until it gets high enough to run over the road or through the back to where the airport used to be, there's a ditch there, but he said it has to get really deep to be able to flow that far. He says, as far as the traffic there, you have all the school traffic, you have the bus barn, you have several new projects in the neighborhood that are feeding traffic to that road. Y'all had one in here a couple of months ago, that they were trying to open up Furtick Road to bring more traffic to Michigan Avenue, but I think the opening of that road was either pulled away or denied. Let's see. We walked the property out there and looked at it, at the back of the property where they've been filling it, there's actually sandbags on the property line, where they have tried to stop the dirt from flowing over on the neighbors. So that tells you there, they've already done extensive filling on the project. Let's see. They already had a halfway house out there a few years ago, I think it was back before they'd done the transition home, and they had problem with the kids walking back and forth to the school, being, I don't know if you want to call it harassed, or but by messing with the kids out of the halfway house, and that was kind of a religious thing that was approved there. I'm not saying these people are going to do that, but it's something that happened. I was at the planning board meeting for this gentleman, and they said they're going to have their religious services on Sundays, and they're going to have, I think it's Wednesday nights they have meetings, but what they didn't tell everybody is they're planning to have training facility there to do employee training, they're going to have counseling there during the week, all these things are going to happen during the week while the traffic is coming in and out of there. So all this about it'll be after-hours and the traffic won't be an issue, will be an issue when they're doing all their other stuff that they're going to run to the church. I think I covered everything he asked, but thank you.
Thank you, make sure I fill out that form, you know the routine. Anyone else want to speak to this item? If not, I'm going to allow the applicant to speak one more time.
Just to address some of the concerns that the resident did have, the gentleman that was here, he said that the counseling and the training, that would not include 250 people, that counseling is like a one-on-one counseling, the training would be a typical, it's not a larger group, and the services we have is Sunday morning, Sunday night, Tuesday, and Friday. He also alluded to that there are sandbags on the back of the property, there's no sandbags on the back of the property currently, they weren't there the other days, unless somebody else put them there. We're not, we have not begun to build or do anything on the property besides keep the grass cut, because we're anticipating whatever decision that we have tonight to carry out with the project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, just want, I guess, one more thing. First of all, I think as everyone who's come up and spoken with you realizes, it can be a little intimidating, so if I misspoke on the name of the road, please accept my apologies. I did want to point out that the applicants only owned the property since July of last year, so a lot of the issues that have been raised, you know, were these, anything that did occur, occurred prior to their acquisition, and like I said, we are already assessing the environment and working with DEP staff as far as addressing anything that may have occurred prior to them taking ownership of the, of the land.
All right, thank you.
Sir, thank you.
This time we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilman Urban.
I just wanted to say for the record, I did meet with a number of residents, and also spoke to a number of residents who voiced the same concerns they did this evening. I do sympathize and share with their concerns on the traffic, I travel down Michigan Avenue every day, and it's quite a mess that that road is, and I don't, I don't think it can support, especially in this portion of the road, any more commercial activity, but I do share those concerns. I did want to know, they said that they spoke to the city about the mailing list, do we have a list of what was mailed out and that happened?
Tisha Manning, zoning manager, so the applicant did reach out to us and request a mailing list, which we provided to them, and they also provided us a copy of the letter was mailed, they did not, we were not provided any proof of mailing, but we did provide the list to them and have a copy of what they mailed out to the citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody from the community coming to speak, I obviously value your input, and it goes into the decision that, that, you know, we, we make this evening on this, and then I also understand you guys are working very hard to get your project underway for your congregation, you've spent a lot of money as well. I agree with the gentleman here that, you know, I wish we could have a church on every corner where, where people can conduct fellowship and access services, we always need more services when it comes to those things in the city of St. Cloud. And then to the comment of the gentleman, I forget his name, Michael, said, you know, we don't necessarily live in the neighborhood, I actually grew up in this neighborhood, and probably, a lot of you have probably ran me off of your property at one point in the day from riding my dirt bike all through that neighborhood, so I'm very familiar with it. This is a tough one for me, but I do have some concerns, just like Councilmember Urban had said, you know, with, with the traffic and, you know, the addition of some commercial out there, there is commercial going in on Unulte in Michigan, you guys probably already see the signs up there, and I don't know if we should start, you know, creeping in down, down Michigan. I've had the opportunity to speak with a lot of residents on Rebecca, David, South Indiana, all up and down Michigan, so I'll probably end up voting no on this tonight, but I just wanted to take a few minutes to say thank you to the community for coming out and spending some time with us this evening to help us better make a decision.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place, I'm a pastor. I've been down this road before, I remember when we applied for permitting of the 30 acres that we own on Canoe Creek, and heard all the same arguments from people from the community, we're surrounded by residential, and the biggest concern was, felt we would create a drainage problem, felt we would create a noise problem, and they felt the biggest issue is that we would create a traffic problem, and the truth is, you know, we run several thousand now, as far as membership is concerned, we have a daycare, and we have Sunday morning services, we have activities during the week, and the problem is most of our traffic is not during peak business hours, when people are coming and going from work. There certainly are times that it is a challenge, you know, when people are coming there trying to get out on the highway, but it hasn't created a, a traffic hazard, and most of the concerns that people, well, just about all the concerns that people had in our community turned out to be unfounded. And now, many of the people, it's really interesting, within a few years of our being there and being established and making a positive impact in the community, many of those residents in that community are now attending my church, they bring their kids to our daycare, you know, we have hundreds of people that are playing soccer on the weekends, that are, most of them are from the neighborhood, and so it's making a positive impact, and if anything, we helped correct some of the drainage problems because of, we had, you know, engineering work that was brought up to date, and so I'm kind of struggling with this thing, I certainly don't want to upset our residents, but again, I'm, I've been down this road before, and it, many of the fears just did not work out. Will there be some challenges, I'm sure there always are, no matter what is built there, and so I'm inclined to support the staff on this issue.
Mr. Mazzaris, you have a... Sir, 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 no comment, please. Mr. Mazzaris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I just want to remind the council, what you're looking at here is approving a conditional use permit for property that has low-density residential and a residential zoning on it right now. The code allows for, for religious institutions, churches to be, to be approved with conditional uses in those areas, and that's the analysis you're going through right now, I just want to make sure the council understands that to comply with the law with regards to this, you need to stay away from the issue of what, of it being a church facility, and the way I would encourage you to look at it, you have to look at it as a non-residential use in a residential area, and you have, and on, and your staff memo, the staff's done a good job pointing it out, but your staff memo has the six factors that you're supposed to consider in doing it, so part of your analysis, need to stay away from the issue about what the actual use is, whether it's being a church, but more along the lines if it's a non-residential use and doesn't fit in the area and in the neighborhood.
I understand. Would anyone else in the council like to speak to this item? Do we have a motion for approval or a motion for denial?
Motion to deny.
We have a motion for denial from Councilmember Matheny, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Mr. Mazzaris.
And just to point out for the motion maker, so there are, if you could just refer to the, of the factors that you see in the, in, in the staff memo that we're talking about, and my guess, my suggestion to you is you probably just don't think it doesn't fit there right, so it doesn't meet the, consistent with the general patterns of land development within the zoning district and in the area and the neighborhood, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny, Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell.
Nay.
Motion carries 3-2.
And it, the motion fails, I mean, the motion that she made passes, but the application has been denied. Thank all of you for coming and offering your input, we're very grateful for your being here today and taking time to offer us your input, thank you. If you'll please move on outside for your conversations, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read items two and three into the record?
First reading an introduction for ordinance number 2024-01, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of approximately 2.36 acres identified as downtown site one from PUB, Public Institutional, and MDR, Medium Density Residential Future Land Use Designation, to COM, Commercial Future Land Use Designation, generally located north of 10th Street, east of Massachusetts Avenue, and south of 8th Street, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, subraibility, copies on files and effective date. First reading an introduction for ordinance number 2024-02, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 1.56 acres identified as downtown site one from R-3 multifamily dwelling residential zoning designation to CBD-1, Central Business District One, zoning designation generally located west of New York Avenue, east of Massachusetts Avenue, and south of 8th Street, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, subraibility, copies on files and effective date.
Thank you, Melissa Dunklen, Director of Community Development. The request before you tonight is to amend the future land use and zoning for the parcels known as the downtown site one. The existing future land use is medium-density residential and public institutional, the proposed future land use is commercial, the existing zoning is multifamily dwelling, R3, and the proposed zoning is central business district one. This development is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. The graphics before you depict the existing future land use and proposed future land use. On the left, you'll see that currently it's medium-density residential and the, and the public institutional land use, and then on the right, you'll see where we're changing it to commercial to complete the block there. These graphics depict the existing zoning and proposed... These graphics depict the existing zoning and proposed zoning map changes. And again, on the left, you'll see the existing, and on the right, you'll see the proposed, where we complete the block with the CBD one zoning district. Staff reviewed this request and it went to DRC on November 21st, 2023, and recommended approval. Likewise, the Planning Commission recommended approval. And we are requesting that City Council approve ordinance number 2024-01 and 2024-02. And I am available for any questions as this is a city-initiated project.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these items? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Ed Hilfers, and I live at 714 Massachusetts Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. And I want to know what you're going to do with all the water that's going to come off the parking lot that's going to be there. Because right now, Massachusetts Avenue is like a river in a hard rain right now. And on 8th, the corner 8th, I've lived there for seven years, and there's a sewage problem and a hole that keeps coming in that road. Every six months, they fill it back up, and it's just, that has to be fixed before anything is done. That's all I have to say.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Urban.
Thank you. So I did watch the Planning Commission meeting and heard some of the comments from the other residents, and I just wanted to point out that this is simply changing the future land use and zoning. There are no other plans at this time. It just gives the city more flexibility to improve our downtown and the area around us. So just wanted to point that out. The other concern I heard before that I didn't hear this evening was about the community garden. I know it's very important to some residents in our community, so that, as far as I understand, that's not going anywhere in the near term, right?
Yeah, these decisions don't affect what we do at the community garden. It'll have to do with, you know, how it's being used, how many lots we can rent, and what's the best use for the property. So we got plenty of places for a community garden if we need it.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to these items? Could I entertain a motion regarding the first ordinance, 2024-01?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Fletcher, a second from Councilmember Matheny for approval. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of 2024-02? Member Matheny makes a motion, the mayor makes a second. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Reminding that item number four has been continued to the March 14th meeting. Brings us to item number five. Madam Clerk, would you please read that into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-58, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, amending the City of St. Cloud General Employees Retirement System Plan to include council members as eligible participants, and restating the plan in its entirety to incorporate recent plan amendments, providing for codification, providing for suborbidity of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for administrative corrective corrections of scribners' errors, and providing for publication and effective date.
Good evening. Justin Kleisner, Human Resources Director. This ordinance tonight expands the definition of eligible participants in our general pension to include council members. This would take effect immediately following the passing of it, which means that the council members would begin the required contributions of 1% to the pension plan. The same provisions, investing periods apply, just like any other full-time general employee. If you have any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Item number six, please.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-03, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending section 5.07 of the city's employees handbook, providing for suborbidity, conflict, and effective date.
Hello again. Justin Kleisner, Human Resources Director. This ordinance tonight updates our employee handbook repayment plan revision, our policy. This is something that we did following the direction of the City Council. This updated language sets a cap for how much an employee must pay at a monthly rate if they're overpaid for a certain amount of period, three months, for example. It grants the city manager the authority to enter into a written agreement that may deviate from that policy. It also encourages employees or tells employees that they need to notify us if they've found any potential errors on their pay stubs. We do have systems in place so that this situation shouldn't happen again in the future. And if you have any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Brings us to item number seven.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the Platte Utility and Drainage Easement located west of Oakanue Creek Road, south of Dolphino Court, and east of Cipriani Lane, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for suborbidity, conflict, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. The request before you tonight is for an abandonment of a drainage and utility easement. This is the second and final hearing. Little background on this project. It is located in the Vilagio subdivision. In 2015, it was annexed into the city. Subsequently, in 2016, the Vilagio Community Association sold off portions of Track C. And that Track C is located to the rear of lots 19, 20, 21, and 23, and I believe on the east side of those lots. And they sold portions to both those homeowners and other individuals. And so the owner conveyed portions of Track C, and then we discovered during a building permit review that the pool and screen enclosure encroached into the five-foot utility and drainage easement and a portion of Track C. So the homeowner came in and they completed a lot reconfiguration, and now they're requesting to abandon the utility and drainage easement. Here's a graphic representation for context, showing the five-foot by 50-foot easement to be abandoned. It's highlighted in yellow on the left-hand sketch of description. And the right graphic shows the lot reconfiguration that was completed in November that added the portion of Track C to the south and east to the original lot 19. The graphic to the right also depicts the new property boundary. Okay, we routed this request for review, and there were no objections received. DRC and staff recommended approval, and we are requesting that council approve ordinance number 2024-10. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Item number eight.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the Platte Right-of-Way generally located on Florida Drained Land Company subdivision number one as recorded in Platte Book B, pages 65 and 66 of the public records of Osceola County, Florida, more specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for suborbidity, conflict, and effective date.
Thank you, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request before you is for a vacation of a right-of-way, or sorry, rights-of-way adjacent to Macy Island Road and the K-8 school site in the development known as Tohoqua. The rights-of-way run through the proposed K-8 school site, and they're not required for the construction of the school site. Here's a graphic representation for context depicting the two rights-of-way. You'll see them colored in red there. The graphic on the left is a snippet from the approved concept plan for Tohoqua, and the K-8 school is the red neighborhood center at the southwest portion of the concept plan. And the graphic to the right shows the locations of the two areas where the rights-of-way will be vacated. This request was routed for review, and no objections were received. Therefore, staff recommends approval and requests that council approve ordinance number 2024-14, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Gilbert. Gilbert?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Brings us to item number nine.
Public hearing for resolution number 2024-01-R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2023-154-R, which adopted the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager had certified there are prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director. This is Budget Amendment Number Two of Fiscal Year 23/24. And the summary of the background is the city manager has certified there's our funds available to appropriate additional funds. So for the general fund, it's a $1,284,640 increase. The majority of that increase is from intergovernmental transfers by $998,051. And this is the repayment to the general fund for amounts previously paid towards Project SW 2006, the Illinois Avenue pipelining project. This project was grant-funded and funds have been received by the Stormwater Fund, the grant reimbursement. So now the Stormwater Fund is paying the general fund back. Increased revenues from federal grants, public safety by $250,000 for our awarded 2024 COPS grant, $30,000 for a JAG grant for a tract robot, and $6,589 for a JAG grant for police-ready bicycles. Increased expenditures for the fire department salaries and benefits by that same $998,051. That was a well-timed repayment because we did not receive the SAFER grant this year, and we need additional firefighters to staff an additional station. It's increased expenditures for the police department salaries and benefits by $250,000 for the six additional police officers for the aforementioned COPS grant, and increased expenditures for the police department operating supplies by $6,589 for three police-ready bicycles. Decrease your city council contingency by $127,000. Increase police department expenditures for communication services by $9,000, maintenance contracts by $17,000, and operating supplies by $66,000 to account for additional expenses for those six new COPS-grant police officers. They fund the salaries and benefits. They do not fund everything else that is required. And increase expenditures for the police department machinery and equipment by $65,000 for the purchase of the aforementioned tract robot. Okay, so that was a lot, a mouthful for the general fund. So do you have any questions before I move on to the rest of it? I have pictures of the robot if you want, and the chief could probably explain more to you if you...
You're going to do the robot, they said?
It's, yeah, it's, I'm sure it's going to be an asset to the police department. So if there are no questions, I'll move on to the next items. The gas tax, it's a $0 increase. We're decreasing expenditures which were budgeted for contractual services by $17,205 and increasing expenditures for intergovernmental transfers by the same amount for the newly established project of ST 2405. And this is the Budinger Avenue sidewalk extension. I believe that was requested by council. 1% surcharge fund, an increase of $1,120,786. We're increasing revenue from prior year fund balance. We're increasing expenditures for intergovernmental transfers by $735,286, and those were increased costs for Project PS 2104, the Fire Station 32 rebuild. Also, increase expenditures for the fire department machinery and equipment by $302,000 to account for a fire rescue budgeted and expended in last fiscal year, but not received until like right after the 1st of October. So this is an administrative update only. We're not spending $302,000 more dollars. We already spent it, but this is administratively correcting our current year's budget. It's accounting weeds. And we're increasing expenditures for the police department machinery and equipment by $76,000 and for Parks and Recreation by $7,500. And this accounts for increased vehicle replacement costs. New vehicle costs continue to rise, and as hard as we try to account for that, you know, we came up a little short, you know. $76,000 is a lot, but it is spread over, I think, 17 vehicles, so it's actually not that much per vehicle. Capital projects fund, the $17,205 increase, and that's for the project ST 2405, the Budinger Avenue sidewalk extension. Police impact fee fund, an increase of $680,000, and that's for vehicles and emergency lighting for our six new COPS-grant police officer positions. The water fund, haven't seen that one in a while, $800,000 increase. And this is for the transfer of the remaining cash in the water fund to Toho. So we have, it's a little bit less than $800,000, but all the cash belongs to them. Just as a side note, we have transferred all of our water and sewer impact fees to Toho, so all of those are gone. So now we just have the water. And the sewer fund is $700,000 increase for the same reason, transferring the remaining fund cash to Toho in accordance with the inter-local agreement. And the Stormwater Fund, a $998,051 increase. And again, that's to repay the general fund for amounts that were fronted for them for that Illinois Avenue pipelining project, which was grant-funded. And finally, the building fund, a 0 increase. We are decreasing expenditures for contingency by $117,000 and increasing expenditures for professional services by the same amount for ICC accreditation for the building department and a building fund future growth master plan study. And our recommendation is approval of Resolution 2024-001-R. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have question or discussion or motion by council. We'll have motion from council.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Brings us to item number ten.
Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero-six R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for a place of worship in a C B D dash one central business, one zoning district on a zero point fourteen acres known as Iglesia de Dios El Faro, generally located south of Ninth Street, east of Kentucky Avenue, west of Massachusetts Avenue, and north of Tenth Street, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Council. Tisha Manning, zoning manager for community development. I am presenting to you tonight a conditional use for Iglesia de Dios El Faro, and it's at fourteen, eighteen, Tenth Street. Staff does recommend approval with some conditions. This, the background is, its current zoning is C B D one. The future land use is commercial, and the proposed conditional use is an expansion of the existing church and staging for a food pantry. It poses no adverse impacts to city facilities. This is the graphic depiction of where the property is located. Again, it's within the C B D one zoning district, and it has commercial future land use, which is what is also surrounding the property. Staff recommendation is approval with conditions. The site, so to, for the site, changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code. There are no proposed changes to the site at this time. They will be using the site as is. So condition number two is that any garbage and/or pallet shall not be kept at the front of the building, except on designated pickup days provided by solid waste. Because they are using the building that fronts right on Tenth Street for the staging, we are asking that they just store those pallets on the side or behind the property as to keep, you know, clutter-free right there on Tenth Street. Planning Commission reviewed this item and recommended approval of resolution two zero two four dash zero six R with conditions as stated by staff, and likewise, staff is asking the same of city council. And I am available if you have any questions, and I did not see the applicant in the audience. So if you have any questions, I'm available too.
All right, thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Do we have any questions or motions?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next item, eleven.
Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero-eight R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for a ballet studio in the N B neighborhood business zoning district on the one point zero six acres known as City Beautiful Ballet, generally located south of Chisholm Park Trail, east of Hidden Heights Trail, west of South Narcusi Road, and north of Rumble Road, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Council. Tisha Manning, zoning manager for community development. The conditional use before you tonight is for City Beautiful Ballet, and it is located at fourteen, twenty-four, South Narcusi Road, which is actually inside Strip Plaza. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of this item as well. This item is currently located in the neighborhood business zoning district with the future land use of commercial. Again, it is a ballet studio in an existing retail strip plaza. A little bit more background is this ballet studio is already in existence and has been in existence. The reason this conditional use is before you is because they came into, they were annexed into the city, started operating as a ballet studio, sold the property, and the new property owner did not acquire their business tax receipt within the allotted timeframe, thus requiring now that they come back for a conditional use. So their operations never stopped. It poses no adverse impacts to city facilities. And this just describes, again, a little bit more about that background of why they're here for this conditional use. This is just a graphic depiction of the current zoning and the current future land use. And staff recommends approval of resolution two zero two four zero zero eight R. Planning Commission also recommended approval, and likewise, we ask the same of city council. And I'm available if you have any questions, as well as I believe the applicant is available.
Is the applicant, would he like to speak to that item? Not that you have to. All right. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Then we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure they came up to compliance with the, for the license.
Yes, sir. We have been in communication with the applicant. If the conditional use is approved, then we will go ahead and issue them a B T R.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Urban.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Dance away, brother. Item number twelve.
Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero-nine R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for a daycare facility in the Stevens Plantation P U D planned unit development zoning district on the one point thirty-eight acres known as Kitty Academy, generally located south of Nolte Road, east of Lafayette Trace Circle, west of Canoe Creek Road, and north of Marietta Way, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Council. Tisha Manning, zoning manager for community development. And the conditional use before you tonight is for Kitty Academy, Saint Cloud. It's a daycare that will, is proposing to be in the Stevens Plantation P U D area, Retail Plaza area, which is almost directly behind where the Walmart is, right there off of Nolte. Staff does recommend approval with conditions of this conditional use. The background is, again, it's in the Retail Plaza of the Stevens Plantation P U D, so their future land use is low-density residential. And the proposed conditional use is for a two-story daycare facility of approximately five thousand square feet, and it poses no adverse impact to city facilities. This is the graphic depiction of where the daycare will be located. As you can see, it is surrounded by low-density future land use, and it does depict with the zoning that it is inside the P U D area. This is a concept plan that is proposed by the applicant of what they are anticipating building for their daycare. Again, it's a two-story, five thousand square feet facility in that area. And so this is just another representation of the vacant lot there. And what I want to point out here with this is that directly behind where they're wanting to build, it's about a hundred and fifty-four square feet of a drainage easement. So it does give it some type of buffering to that residential that is in the rear of the property there. As well as, you know, once they come in for site development plan, we could always look at other ways to try to buffer them up against that residential. Staff does recommend approval with conditions. The approvals are that the concept plan, of course, does not serve as the site plan, and they would need to come in for approval of a site development plan. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item on January sixteenth of twenty-four, and likewise, staff does ask that city council approve resolution two zero two four dash zero 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 nine R with conditions as stated by staff. And staff is available if you have any questions, as well as the applicant.
Thank you. The applicant here, would you like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Council. My name is Todd Howder. I'm with M B V Engineering, eighteen thirty-five, Twentieth Street, Bay Beach, Florida. We're the civil engineers representing the applicant, who's also with us tonight. Just want to appreciate staff's time and the planning staff for working through this project. We'll remain available if you have any questions for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So probably the mayor is the only one who remembers. I always am concerned about the noise with the daycare. I mean, I love daycare, we need it and all that, but I think about the single-family homes that are gonna back right up to the daycare and, you know, the impact on their quality of life with, you know, children having a good time outside all day long. So I'm not opposed to the conditional use. I just want to put some conditions in it, and I don't know the best way to craft it, but that there needs to be some monitoring of the noise, or possibly, instead of pushing the play area back against the pond, the pond isn't gonna provide any buffer to noise. You know, maybe move it, put the building in between the area. I don't know, reconfigure the site. I just, I just am really concerned about the noise for the single-family homes that have been there for twenty-plus years that this is gonna be right next to. So if my other council members are okay with that, I would like, you know, to ask staff to work on finding ways to mitigate the noise. And the pond is not gonna do it. So don't say there's a hundred and fifty-foot pond, but, you know, wide pond. I mean, the, you know, the noise is gonna go right over that pond, so. Trees won't do it either. So just, I would like to have some consideration for that.
Councilmember Fletcher.
I agree with Councilwoman Matheny on that, and I have no, I have no issues with that. One of the concerns that I have on this, that's, that's one of the areas that I, you know, I go into the neighborhood Walmart there, and that is extremely busy. Like, that parking lot and that, that whole corner, there's never no parking there. It's, it's really tough. And then by adding, I'm glad that, you know, we got the new, you know, the new restaurant coming in. There's, that's finally all getting built out. I just want to put on the record that it, I mean, it's congested. We're gonna have to figure out the parking over there. I'm not against approving the conditional use. It's just maybe something we can talk about offline, 'cause it's maxed out. There is no more parking at that Walmart.
I have a daycare at my church. People come and go at different times. Nobody, we do have events every now and then, like a commencement or something, and that would certainly might create a problem with parking. But most of the time, the parking is not an issue. But I could certainly see where that might be an issue. I, I could see where the noise might be a challenge at times. Do you have any ideas of how to mitigate that besides putting mufflers on a mer?
Yes, sir. So staff was taking into consideration some of the noise. So one of the things is when the applicant comes in for site development plan, and we've been in kind of conversation with the applicant, is maybe having them put up some type of wall there that will help buffer that area, as well as maybe some different type of landscaping, just to kind of add some more buffering so that, like Council, Deputy Mayor Matheny said, the noise doesn't just go right over that easement.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Could you bring that plan up again so we can look at it?
Could you speak to your mic?
Could you bring that plan up so we could look at it?
Yes, sir. I was kind of hoping when they said two-story, I was like, well, maybe the play area is inside.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you, you can't keep kids inside a building for the whole day. I mean, we're right up against the neighborhood, and we have never had any noise complaints, even though we got a playground right up against the neighborhood, but we have a big buffer, hedges, and... But again, let's just understand the concern for the noise.
Mr. Menzeris.
So this is a conditional use permit, and obviously, as it says in its name, this is the time if you have some conditions that you'd like to sort of consider or do like to try to craft, it would be appropriate if you did this tonight, if you're gonna approve it the way it is. Some of these, a lot of things that you see in conditional use permits like this are hours of operation, hours of outdoor play, kind of, that kind of thing that you could put in there that might address the noise issue so that the neighbors aren't, don't have to hear the noise to the extent they can all day long. So, and I'm assuming that might be something that you could work through. Other than that, I don't know what other ideas you might have, Deputy Mayor.
I don't really have any good ones, I'll be honest with you. I just think, like, you know, everybody's like, well, it's during the day, and everybody's at work. I'm like, well, not everybody's at work all day, you know. So if now I have this noise constantly, you know, which is great. It's kids, and they're having fun and stuff, but I just, you know, I mean, maybe a wall. I mean, it'd be great if the site could be reconfigured and the building was in between. You know, the building was towards the back, but I understand you're buffering the play area. But I guess, for me, I would want, like, a wall and some landscaping to, and, and not like, I mean, like a masonry wall, you know, and some landscaping to try to buffer the noise.
Any other discussion? So are you-
I'll make a motion.
With conditions?
Sure, I'll make a motion to, when the site plan comes in, for staff to work on the mitigation of the sound. Some ideas would be a wall and landscaping, maybe reconfigure the site. Also to look, I don't know, if, do you want me to add a condition about parking, Sean?
I don't think it's gonna get any better, but are you making a special condition to, to, to force the, the wall on the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, to require the wall.
To require it, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
To require it, yeah.
Bad choice of words.
That's my motion.
We have a motion with conditions by Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next items on the agenda are ordinances before the council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for a final hearing. The council will not take final action on the item tonight. Full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur at the final hearing, at which the council will consider final action. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item into the record?
Introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending chapter forty-six, traffic and vehicles, creating Article Three, pedicabs, sections forty-six through one, thirty-one through forty-six dash two hundred, and authorizing the use of pedicabs upon designated streets providing for that state and county roads are not authorized, providing for a revocable license, providing for a waiver of claims, providing for parking regulations, providing that a driver's license is required, providing for registration, providing for required equipment, designating a pedicab boundary area, providing for number of occupants, speed and required insurance, providing for enforcement, providing for conflict, subrability, administrative corrections, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion from council for adoption of this-
No, for authorization.
Yes, approval of introduction. For the approval of introduction. Thank you for keeping me straight.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I believe items two, three, and four go together. If you could read those.
Introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, an ordinance of the City Council- Introduction for ordinance number 2024-19, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately sixteen point two acres identified as Lake Lissy Ventures LLC, located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and east of Pine Grove Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter one seventy-one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Since we are not discussing, can we just go and entertain a motion here? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of this ordinance? The reading.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Please read item number three into the record.
Introduction for ordinance number 2024-20, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation MDR, medium-density residential, to approximately sixteen point two acres identified as Lake Lissy Ventures LLC, located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and east of Pine Grove Road, providing for amending of the future, official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, subraibility and copies on files, and effective date.
Thank you. Could I entertain a motion for the publication of this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Got another motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Could I have a second?
Second.
We're on the roll. Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And item number four.
Introduction for ordinance number 2024-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zone district of PUD Plan Unit Development, compatible with a medium-density residential future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2024-21 for approximately sixteen point two acres identified as Lake Lissy PUD, located north of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and east of Pine Grove Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, providing for the approval of the preliminary master plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, subraibility, and effective date.
Thank you. Could I entertain a motion for the publication of this ordinance?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Urban makes a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Certainly speeds things up. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one item I wanted to discuss with you real quick. It's just mostly an update on the, on where we are with the, with the Phase Two Downtown project and the previous direction of the council to work, to work with the contractor on that job. As you know, under our contract, the initial step towards revolving, resolving disputes is to have a pre-litigation mediation, and we have initiated that process in which we're getting that scheduled. We selected a mediator. We're moving forward. What is, what has become clear is that the, you know, that the contractor, although willing to talk to us, we are, we are trying to work through it so that we can be in the best position to present the best case on behalf of the city and as well as to avoid any problems with future litigation because I think there is a strong likely we'll be in that path. And of course, that's something that the city may have to do to address the problems with the project. So towards that end, we have, that's all I have.
Anything else?
No, no, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Tomac.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. I sent out the January CIP project report update today, this afternoon. I would have sent it earlier, but I didn't realize we didn't copy you, so. Mental error. But, so you should have gotten it this afternoon. I appreciate your patience. We went through that new process very well. What I took down for notes for the council actions for the introduction of ordinances is with each item, I'll actually prepare a recommended motion. And then that way, you guys can just refer to that when you're, you're making the actual motion. But I appreciate your patience in working through that with us. And other than that, have a wonderful weekend and rodeo.
Thank you for your patience and, and helping the mayor handle that. So thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
I just want to say thank you to the Assistant City Manager for stepping in while Veronica's out. And of course, our thoughts and prayers are with her family as she, she goes through this time. Regarding the new process, as far as the council action items go, is it possible to do like a second consent agenda where we can just wipe them in one swoop or no?
Now, each, so every ordinance has to be read, has to have a first reading and then a final adoption. So you actually have to read the ordinance by title.
Okay. Just thought, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
But next time you're in Tallahassee, you can ask them to change the law.
Councilmember Matheny.
Um, I don't have anything except I hope to see everybody at the parade on Saturday.
Are you riding a horse?
I would love to, but I think, I think we're on a float. I think, I think the floats are more dangerous, is what I hear.
Why is everybody looking at me?
I was going to make a comment, Mayor.
That's a longer fall than from a wagon, huh? All right. Councilmember Gilbert, you stop laughing and have any closing comments?
I look forward to seeing y'all with my boots and my hat, and it's going to be a wonderful parade. So I'm looking forward to that.
Very good. Councilmember Urban.
I'm looking forward to the rodeo parade as well. Hopefully, everybody stays safe out there, doesn't fall off anything. And thank you to Mr. Tomac and all staff who have stepped up during this difficult time for our city manager. So thank you for that. That's all.
And thank you, Mr. Tomac, for filling in. Well, your leadership has certainly been incredibly effective and helpful, especially with Ms. Miller's absence, and I just encourage everyone to remember her in your prayers. It's a tough thing losing, uh, your dad. The Boy Scouts of America would like to extend their deepest gratitude for the continued support of their program and our contribution to our grant program of seventeen hundred dollars. And they are very grateful for our continued support. Also, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, they are congratulating St. Cloud on earning recognition as a 2023 Tree City USA. And we love trees in St. Cloud, so glad to recognize that recognition. Thank our staff for their faithful support that makes that recognition possible. With that, we come to our information section and report section. Thursday, February the fifteenth, there will be a City Council workshop at three PM here in council chambers. Thursday, February the twenty-second, there will be a City Council meeting at six thirty PM, also here in the chamber. Available for your review is warrant list number four. And we do remind everybody, please come out and enjoy the rodeo parade. With that, there are no other items on our agenda. We will be adjourned. Thank you.